We have a full night tonight. We're going to call the Board of Selectmen's Financial Meeting to order. If you'd all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item is to accept the agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded by Mike?
Seconded.
Hilton?
All right.
Or Hernandez. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next is approval of the February 12th, 2020 Special Meeting Minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any changes, errors, submissions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. And the next is approval of minutes from February 19, 2020.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any changes, errors, submissions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. As is our annual event, we're going to have our annual audit presentation. And Mike Van Deventer is here tonight from Mahoney Sable. And I think he has some handouts for us. After that, we will be having a presentation from the airline chair. Hi, Mike.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Is Tom Robinson here?
I did not see him.
He should be here momentarily.
I may be done with my presentation by then, so.
He's on his way. Let me put it that way.
Good evening. Again, my name is Mike Van Deventer. I'm a partner at Mahoney Sable, ultimately responsible for overseeing the audit for the town and issuing the reports on behalf of the firm. You should have received the town's basic financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2019, as well as a state single audit report. So those are the two reports that we issued in connection with our work. I'm not going to go through those works, those reports in detail. I'll go through my presentation, provide really the scope of work, the results, some overall financial highlights, and certainly if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those at any point in time. So if we can just jump real quick to Slide 2. As far as the scope of work, again, we did perform an audit of the town's financial statements. We performed that audit in accordance with both the auditing standards issued by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, as well as the government auditing standards issued by the Government Accountability Office. In addition, based on the level of state financial assistance received, we did perform a state single audit in accordance with the State Single Audit Act. The town was not required to have a federal single audit. That threshold is 750,000, and you were just below that threshold at about 744,000. So a little bit more, and it made sure that that federal threshold. In addition, we also performed and agreed upon procedures on the end-of-school-year reports. And again, those school reports are required by the State of Connecticut Department of In connection with our audit work, we do issue a number of reports. Again, the main report is the report on the financial statements. We did issue unmodified clean opinions on your financial statements. Our opinion does cover your governmental activities, each of your major funds, which for the town was your general fund, your capital project fund, your capital nonrecurring fund. And then we issue an opinion on what's considered your aggregate remaining fund information. And again, that includes all of your non-major special revenue, your internal service funds, your permanent funds, your pension trust funds, as well as your private purpose trust and agency funds. So again, a lot of information gets included in the audit, and ultimately, the opinion that we rendered is the opinion that you would want to see as a board. In addition to the report on the financial statements, we do also issue a report on compliance and on internal control over financial reporting. I just want to point out here that here we're not actually expressing an opinion on compliance with laws and regulations, or on the effectiveness in your internal control structure. Again, during the course of performing our audit, if we identified what we consider to be a material noncompliance with a law or regulation, or a material weakness in your internal control structure, we're required to include it in this report. And again, we did not report any such matters. In connection with the state single audit, we do issue a report on compliance and on internal control at the state financial assistance level. So again, in this report, we do actually express an opinion on your compliance with your major programs. The total state financial assistance expended by the town for fiscal year 2019 was about 5.9 million. Of that, about 1.12 million was considered nonexempt and subject to our compliance work. Your major programs were the Open Choice Program at the school district, and then the Town Aid Road Program. We did issue unmodified clean opinions on compliance over those programs. And again, we did not report any internal control matters. This next section goes over your financial highlights. And again, I try to include stuff in here that I think would be of some importance to the board. Certainly, if there were any concerns that I had during the course of performing the audit, I would kind of include it in these financial highlights. The first slide goes over your general fund budgetary highlights. And again, your original and final budget did provide for the use of fund balance in the amount of 300,000 to balance your revenues and expenditures. You did not have any additional appropriations from fund balance during the year. Your actual net change in fund balance on a budgetary basis was an increase of about 627,000. So that did result in an overall favorable budgetary variance of about 927,000. Your revenues were approximately 410,000 more than budgeted, and that was primarily due to favorable earnings on your short-term investments. And then overall, your expenditures and transfers out were about 518,000 less than budgeted. And again, that represented about 1.5% of your overall budget. And again, no budgetary instances of noncompliance were identified in connection with our testing. The next slide goes over your governmental funds financial statement highlights. And again, your overall combined ending fund balances. So this includes your general fund, as well as all of your capital project and special revenue funds, had an ending fund balance of approximately 14.6 million, which was an increase of about 6 million from the prior year. That $6 million increase was really driven by the issuance of the bonds. Overall, your total fund balances consisted of about 7.1 million in your general fund. Again, that was an increase of about 625,000 from the prior year. Your capital project fund had an increase of about 5.3 million, and now reflects the fund balance of about 14.5 million. Again, that all reflects restricted bond proceeds for your authorized capital projects. And then your capital nonrecurring fund currently has a fund balance of about 1.6 million, which was an increase of about 180,000 from the prior year. And then all of your other funds had a total fund balance of about 1.4 million, which was a decrease of about 130,000 from the prior year. The two funds that the town currently has deficits in are both the sewer and water operating funds. The sewer operating fund has deficit of about 748,000. That was an increase in the deficit of about 90,000 from the prior year. But again, the water operating fund has a deficit fund balance of about 511,000, which again, was an increase in the deficit of approximately 55,000 from the prior year. So again, from an accounting perspective, you know, there should be a plan to really address those deficits. I know you've been working towards raising rates and, you know, cutting costs as much as you can cut within the system. Certainly doesn't help that MDC passes on increases as well. But that is, you know, one area that obviously from a town's perspective, you want to look to be able to fund those deficits. The next slide goes over your government-wide financial highlights. And again, the focus on the government-wide financial statements is really on your long-term liabilities. So on this, I'll just touch upon some of your pension and other post-employment benefit liabilities. In terms of the town and police pension plan, you do currently have a net pension liability of about 9.7 million. That was an increase of about 260,000 over the prior year. That funded status of the plan is about 66.6%, and that's currently using a discount rate of about 7.5%. In addition, your volunteer firefighters' plan has a net pension liability of around 850,000. That was a decrease of about 65,000 over the prior year. That plan, which you really only started funding a couple of years ago, has a funded status plan of about 29%. And again, that's using a discount rate of about 6%. So overall, you know, in terms of your, we do look at the discount rates. We have seen discounts rates across municipalities anywhere between 6.5% and 7.5%. So you are kind of on the higher side of the discount rate. As that discount rate goes down, your annual required contributions will increase, but that should also have a positive effect on your funded status over time. Any questions as far as the pension plans and other post-employment benefits? I do have two quick bullets on this slide, one being on the other post-employment benefits. So that does reflect your retiree healthcare benefits for your eligible employees. You do pay that on a pay-as-you-go basis. The overall liability that's been determined from an actuary was about 3.5 million, which was a decrease of about 124,000 over the prior year. And then in terms of the overall state teachers' retirement system, the portion of the net pension liability and net OPEB liability that is attributed to the school district's employees totaled about 31.1 million and 6.2 million respectively. So again, those liabilities are carried by the State of Connecticut, as the town has no legal requirement to fund those obligations. The overall on-behalf payments totaled approximately 3.1 million for the year ended June 30, 2019. So that 3.1 million does get reflected in your financial statements as both revenues and expenses.
Thank you.
But again, no impact on obviously your budgets. There has been discussion about pushing some of those costs down to the municipalities. I will just point out that the state, in terms of their calculating their liability, they're using a discount rate of about 8%. They're bringing that discount rate down to about, I think, about 6.9%, which will have a significant increase in the liabilities that are actually attributed to the town, as well as the annual required contributions that the state will have to make into these And then the last section that I really have is our required communications. And again, our communications are really driven by issues that we may encounter during the course of the audit. The first bullet here really talks about our responsibility under our auditing standards. Although we do assist in the preparation of the financial statements, they are the responsibility of management. All of the information in the financial statements did come from management. Again, it's our responsibility to perform our audit procedures and issue our reports. In terms of the plan scope and timing of the audit, again, no changes in the overall scope of work that was performed. And the timing of the audit work did go as planned, and all reports were filed by the December 31, 2019 filing requirement. In terms of significant audit findings, we do review your accounting policies and practices. No issues from that perspective. The accounting policies that are utilized by the town are disclosed in Note 1 to the financial statements. The town was required to implement a new accounting standard, Gatsby Statement Number 88, certain disclosures related to debt. Again, no impact on how you account for your debt, it just changed some of the language in the disclosure. We do look at significant estimates and judgments as part of the audit process. Significant estimates are really involved in determining amounts that are recorded in your government-wide basis. So again, no impact on your budgets. Those estimates really relate to useful lives that are assigned to your capital assets, as well as the discount rates that are utilized to determine your pension and OPEB liabilities. And as I mentioned before, we did deem those to be reasonable. We had no uncorrected misstatements. So during the course of performing the audit, if we had an adjustment that we proposed to management that they did not want to record, we would have to report that to you. I am actually happy to report that we, you know, didn't have any actual audit adjustments. So again, I think I've mentioned that in the past as part of the audit process. Typically, with municipalities, we have a number of audit adjustments that we typically identify and propose. So again, from the town's perspective, should make you feel very comfortable from an internal reporting perspective. We did obtain a management representation letter. There wasn't anything unusual that was included in that representation letter that, again, I think you should be aware of. And we're not aware of any other consultations with any other independent accountants. So really, that kind of summarizes the overall audit results. Again, there's a lot of information included in the financial statements. Certainly encourage you as board members to go through that and ask questions of management. But I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have as well.
I want to thank Tom Robinson for his diligent work to have no audit adjustments, and to have, again, a clean audit is really remarkable. And he needs to be applauded for that. So, thank you. He runs a very tight ship, and he does a good job. Thank you, Mike. Good to see you. We now are going to be entertained by the Airline Trail Committee. You've got a lot of good information to share with us. Are we going to start with you, Riff?
Yes, please.
Do you want us to move yet, or do you have a short presentation and then the slides?
It's all together.
Okay.
Susan, you might want to move before you get blinded.
Well, you gotta tell me what you want.
I haven't seen her all day since 9:00 this morning. Kate, I haven't seen you, Jim, you know, Ralph, all of you, you know.
Spent a lot of time together.
Yes. Yeah, looks good. So, six years in the making. Here's our story. Basically, in 2013, Owen Guile started some focus groups in Portland, gathered some information. Airline Trail and Recreation in Portland was one of the items. It was picked up at the beginning of 2014 by John Hall of the Jonas Center. He's the executive director. And John Schaefer, who's running the slideshow tonight for us, was on the board of the Jonas Center. They started looking at, how would we get an Airline Trail started? Who would be needed? What do we have to do? And how do we do it? And it came about, it was all about planning, design, and construction. And ultimately, it's all about the users. So what you're looking at here is, here's a section of the trail that got laid down. These are some of the folks that were at the ribbon-cutting ceremony and now introduce our team. We use the town logo. The Come On Over has been around as long as I have. And then this is the logo for the trail. We are not part of the State Airline Trail group. We are separate. Before I go too far, I'd like to introduce some of the members here at the committee. We have John Schaefer, again, who's running the operation. And John did the presentation for me in PowerPoint. He teaches it for a living, which is a good thing for me. Kathy Heron's here. She's on our committee. And I'll talk about it a little bit more. She runs our Complete Streets Group that was a subcommittee originally of the Airline Trail, and they've done a great job of continuing that. And Carol Wineski is here. She is one of the alternates on our committee. Next slide, please. John, in 2017, we received a Connecticut Department Environmental and Energy Protection to design and construct Phase 1. Basically, we got $686,000 for a grant. The town matched it with a $120,000 purchase of the Keenan property, which became our trailhead. We hired DeChella Construction to actually do the work, and we completed 2.3 miles of the trail going east to west. So that means from Depot Hill Road in East Hampton to the YMCA Camp Ingersoll in Portland. And then we built the lead-in and the trailhead from 82 Middle Hatum Road to intersect with the trail another 4/10 of a mile. So basically, we have about 2.7 miles currently of trail. And we had some unused funds at the end of this, and we redid part of the Airline Trail going from the trailhead to the intersection. It was at about 12.5-degree slope. It was too much for pushing a carriage. People had found difficulty with it. So we reduced it to about 5.5-degree slope, and it's much brighter. We'll have some photos of that along the way. Some major accomplishments, as you saw, was great. Here's what it looks like. Here is Depot Hill Road in East Hampton. We come along. Here is the intersection with the trailhead and Middle Hatum Road. And here's where it currently ends at the YMCA Camp Ingersoll. Gorgeous. I mean, that's some of the terminology we've heard over the past couple of years. This is a standard gate that we use at intersections with Breezy Corners Road and Middle Hatum Road, and we also have at Depot Hill Road. Some users walking the trail. It's amazing how many smiles you get when you ask them, how do you enjoy the trail? Do you have any suggestions? And then here's one of the overpasses that goes over Middle Hatum Road, and we fenced it off because it was a drop directly to the road, and became a great piece of the The Alt Committee, the Board of Selectmen, all provided steady support. I got to thank Susan Bransfield. She's been through every event. And Michelle in her office, when I call and say I need Michelle, says, how many and what? They've been really great helping us out. Lou Pear, who is our Board of Selectmen liaison. Lou was formerly my co-chair. He bailed on me to take the job with the town. He's been really good helping. He comes and helps us out. Mary Dickerson, who was here earlier, she provides us with a lot of current information about who is buying, who is selling property adjacent to our property, and how do we go about touching base with those folks. Deanna Rose was our land planner originally. When we started this in 2014, she's moved on to Norwich, but I got to thank her for planting the seeds of making this happen. She really guided us along the first year or two. Again, here's an example of the attendance at the ribbon-cutting. We had a great time. It really touched a lot of folks, and we'll talk about that in a minute. What's good, before we go too far, is one of the things Mary Dickerson has worked on with economic development is coming up with a listing page for businesses in the town. Let us not forget who pays taxes also for us, and who we need to support, who supports us. So if you go onto the Portland website, you can now find a page that we're still working on with the town of being able to find the businesses in town that you can go get gas, you can get a sandwich, you can find a restaurant, you can get to the drugstore, you can get the kombis, you can get the subway, and all those places. So that we now can post this on our kiosk, so when people are at the trail and they're coming from out of town and out of state, they can go find a place to stay in town and spend their money into our local businesses and support them. They've been extremely helpful, and we want to keep that relationship. Our Public Works Group, Bob Shea's here tonight. Bob, it was originally started by Rick Kelsey, not Bob Shea. Bob has been great to work with since he's taken over. He gets it with us. He can't do it all at once, but he tells us what he's going to do and when he's going to do it, and he does it. And that's all we ask for, is, you know, consistency, help us, help ourselves. He's appointed Michael Strina, who was his new supervisor in the roads. And Mike comes to me and says, what can I do to help you? That's the type of attitude this town has, and we really appreciate it. Jacobson Engineering, Joe Dillon has been our contact recently for the last two years, has worked on helping us end Phase 1 and look at Phase 2. DeChella Construction, parking rec Shawn Dwyer, and now Nate Foley, supporting us as part of the parking recreation. Laurie Giannotti from Connecticut Deep, who is retiring in April, and we're going to miss tremendously. She's been a great supporter. Connecticut DOT, when we go to some of the other maps, we're going to see that we may have to parallel Route 66. Connecticut DOT is already including us in their long-term planning, 10 years and out of, you know, what can they do to support us? There is a part of the lot today for DOT that says 1% of their budget can and should be expended for biking and walking trails. So the town administrator, Susan, has to apply for it, but that can be added into any budgetary assistance that we get. And lastly, state reps, Kristy Carpino, who was here earlier tonight. She's been with us from the first day. We did what we call the freezing, was a little freezing for a reason. And she came to me this morning at another meeting, and she said she now has a battery-operated heated jacket for the next time we make her walk at minus 10 degrees in the winter. So it's all been good with our support. So if you look at the headers up here, Airline State Park Trail goes from Wyndham to Putnam, Connecticut. So as you follow this, starting from down here is where we're going to connect eventually. We'll see that in the next slide. This takes us up all the way up to the Putnam Rhode Island, Massachusetts border, 53 miles. So here's the part from East Hampton, Colchester, Hebron, that gets us to Wyndham. And we're going to be connecting to East Hampton, and we've already made that connection. So now we're going to be part of that, and we'll probably add another, at least six miles to that. So think about taking a bike ride and going 60 miles and staying on state and local trails. So it's been wonderful. I stop and ask people where they're from, and I get everything from Massachusetts, Rhode Island, New Hampshire, and New York coming to local trails. So, you know, there is people who are looking to do this all summer long. East Hampton does have some issues. They got a little water issue here they're working on, but they completed Phase 1, Alden's Crossing to 16, and from Depot Hill Road in Portland is now 80% complete. When we decided, designed our trail, it ended at the Portland border, which is 100 yards short of the next roadway. So we made a proposal to East Hampton. They agreed. The Portland Trail actually ends on East Hampton's property at Depot Hill, and the, this is their trail, and this is where it ends at Depot Hill. Their property actually extends to about here, but we did our trail, including all the way up to the roadway. And then they take it over here. Here's their little wetland section. The rest of this is completed. So all we need is this to be fixed, and it's ready to go. Our goal is to connect to the State Airline Park Trail and make it a total of 60-plus You know, one of the things they've, East Hampton's asked us to do is write a letter in support. And we've looked at this from a couple of ways. You know, there's only so much money, and who's going to get it? But we look at, East Hampton's success is our success in that our connection to their trail connects us to the other 53 miles. So if they don't fix this, we stop here. So we're all working together to make this, you know, a better trail for everybody. Planning and discussions are currently going on. We've met with Camp Ingersoll. We proposed a Phase 2, which takes us from where it ends today at the YMCA camp to Route 17 connector at the current Dairy Queen. The new Dairy Queen, which is going to be built across the street, they've started. And Mike Cassetta and his son met with us twice. We gave them a proposal for Phase 2. It changed it from being along Route 66 to following their border along the back. They've agreed to take it to their engineers, barring any issues. They've agreed, and that will get us from the end of the current trail at the YMCA and take us to Route 17. So this is the old railroad actually route. And we follow a lot of it here, which is with Eversource, provided a license agreement to use their property. It ends here. This is the next part. We're going to go along the YMCA camp border, around Butler Construction, cross in front of their pond, and then go along, parallel, around the back, and then connect to Route 17. And this is the old railroad bed that's still basically there. So we want to connect. This mile is probably going to cost as much as the other almost three miles together because of the terrain, but we're working very hard to minimize it as much as we can and use the funding to best we can. Okay, John, if you would. All right, Phase 3. What the hell are you talking about, Phase 3? We haven't done Phase 2 yet. One of the things our committee really looks at is, where are we going, and how are we going to get there? And we really need to think about that today. So our extension to downtown Portland and to the bridge and to Middletown. And just a side note, I've been attending the Middletown meetings. They are doing an airline-type trail to connect from their Midwestfield area to where the Veterans Park is today, and then to the north end of Main Street. North end of Main Street takes them to the Aragoni Bridge. This plan for us takes us to the Aragoni Bridge. That connection will give us all the way to New Haven eventually. So, New Haven- So New Haven, Cheshire, and Meriden and Middletown are working together. We've met with that group. We're all trying to plan to connect and make this a trail over 100 miles in total. The original route takes us through property owners that purchased the Portland Railroad bed in the 1970s. So we're going to need to negotiate with those property owners to try and have nice discussions about using some of their land. Is it an easy sell? No, it's not going to be an easy sell. We know that. Our structure's already built. So we're going to look at how do we get there? We have some proposals, you know, how we could do this. This is the old depot station. I'll talk about that. Here's the Adams area. We can go Freestone Avenue. We can go along Route 66, cross at the depot, go along Airline Avenue and end up underneath the bridge. This takes us over to Middletown. It also takes us to the waterfront park, to the riverfront park, and eventually, as we talk about Phase Four, into Glastonbury. So these are some of our ideas. We're open to suggestions. If you can come up with something, we really appreciate it. Here's the route of the original Airline Railroad. Here's Route 66. As you can see, they kind of follow each other pretty well. And then this is where we would cross. And then this is the downtown and how we would get to the downtown businesses and to the quarry. A lot to go on. We've been working it. It's not an easy proposition, but the effort is in. All right, Phase Four, connect the Airline Trail to the Portland Riverfront Park and continue the trail north along the river. This takes us to Glastonbury. We've walked it from the Portland Fairgrounds to get to Tryon Street in Glastonbury and it works. Not really a hard sell. It's land right along the river. Most of it is leased currently. And that takes us to the old Cumberland Hollister Ferry. And you know, the word is, it's the oldest continuing operating ferry in the country. So we get there, that takes them to Rocky Hill, takes them to Cromwell and to Hartford. So it's another connection point. Some previous accomplishments of the trail and the committee. We've worked with the Selectmen. This is why we do these presentations, to keep everybody informed. We have new board members sitting next to me. We wanted to bring him up to speed in what's been accomplished and what's coming. We hired a consultant by the name of Kevin Grindel. Kevin is also the East Hampton engineer. He helped build their trail and it was smarter than our part, we thought, to hire him to help do a consult for us and help us understand what's going on. Part of this, we became an active partner with Complete Streets Group. If you use the trail, you ride a bike, you ride a bike downtown. How do you get downtown and how do you do other things? So Kathy Herron, her team have been working on sidewalks and streets and things like that. It's a great outlier for us and Kathy and her team have been really super. We hired Jacobson Engineering. They've done the site plans, negotiated agreement with EverSource for the next 25 years. And we purchased a Keegan property. That was $120,000 of taxpayer money. By the way, I'm one of them. And it's turned into a real goldmine for us. We redone the parking lot and it's been really good. We do a census now. Lou Pear and some volunteers have installed a monitoring unit. I'm one of the signposts that every time somebody goes by, it counts. So we're going to get a good head count. And we also have volunteers interviewing people on the trail and saying, where are you from? Why are you here? What do you like? What you don't like? And we continue to get better by doing those kinds of things. For those, this is a new one and I just added, so wasn't on yours, John. This was the original entranceway to the Middle Hattam Road. This is where we started. This is what it looks like today. New parking lot installed. Thank you, Bob Shea. And his team worked with, we redid the lot and this is the path goes out this way up the hill. So tremendous improvement. It's been six years and they tell me that's quick, so I'm surprised, but it takes a lot. We're trying to get it used all year long. Bike, walking, snowshoeing, skiing, whatever we can do. Here's the top of Keegan Hill, back to the parking lot. You can tell it's a nice, easy slope. This is our team. It's Riz, Steve Byrne, Steve Cruzberg, Chantel Foster, who's also our secretary, Kathy, who's here tonight, Tom Ladney, John Schaefer is here, Bill Flood is one of our alternates, Carol's here tonight with us, Carol Wanniski, ex-official Susan, Lou Pear, Bob Shea, Nate Foley, director of parks, and our consultant, Kevin Grindel. And that's it. We gave you a lot of information. Hopefully it was worthwhile to you tonight. Any questions? The rizfor@global.net. We have a Facebook page, Portland, Connecticut, Airline Trail. Look us up. Tell us what you like, what you don't like. We want to thank Andy Bauer. Andy's another volunteer who designed our banner, our logo and everything, made this work for us. And again, John, thank you for the presentation tonight. And that's all I have. Good night, you know everything I know.
Thank you, Riz. The committee.
Now wake up.
That was really well done. I'll open it up for questions from the Selectmen. There's any questions?
What's the timing for the next phase to get the East Hampton part done?
Oh, the East Hampton part, although, um, East Hampton's working with like Connecticut PDEP, the Army Corps of Engineers to come up with a solution everybody can agree on and how to get through the wetlands. So we've been told it's roughly $400,000 to move the utility poles and put a boardwalk over that section. That doesn't include any other funding type streams. So that's the first thing that needs to happen. They need to be able to fix that. They're still working on it. Originally, we thought it would be done last year. They said early spring and now we're looking at hopefully summertime when they can open it. The sad part, people say to us, you know, I get there and then what do I have to do?
I was going to say that there's a little dispute about who's going to pay for EverSource to move their poles. Because you do it for free. It's such a good cause.
One of our comments.
It hasn't been resolved.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's it. And then because of that, it's sort of unknown how long, how long it will take for that financial issue to be solved.
Other questions? Anyone in the audience have questions? Mr. Murphy?
Because the, that property is owned by individual owners and Butler has made us understand that dirt is still excavated and will be for at least another 10 years. So the alternative was to stay out of the traffic patterns for safety. We had to come up with the alternate route. It would be great if we could. Shortest distance between two points would make it easy.
The cost probably half, half the amount of money. Butler actually has purchased the property that's on the other side where their current property is. So the plan is to scan dramatically and use that area and that's why we don't want the trail going there. So it's right, you know, it's the way of where they're going to be developing. It's unfortunate, but they're willing to cooperate by letting this property on the other side of there.
Any other questions?
I was just going to say one more thing, Riz, and get the last word in. I want to thank you and John and Kathy and Carol. All the people on the committee have been on the committee for the first, for five, over six years now, which tells you that the people that are on this committee really work hard, they're dedicated people, and they've really made a nice facility that's been rejuvenated from a rail trail to a multi-use trail. Great job, hardworking people, and a great number of people in the community that whenever you ask them to do something, just like Bob Shea and other people in the community, they step forward. So kudos to all of you people that have been on the committee and I'm really proud of all of you. Great job.
Great cleanup and back.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'd say the same thing. I actually, my house abuts the location, so I get to see a lot of the traffic that's going in and out. This car is there every day. I mean, unless the weather's miserable, this car is there every day. It's heavily used. It's a great asset, so thank you.
Did we say thank you to Complete Streets as well and making our streets so much safer, which is a, you know, an offshoot of the committee? And we really appreciate all that you continue to do. So thank you, Kathy and team. Great job. Mr. Ward.
Well, I'd like to just make one comment. I agree with everyone and certainly appreciate everything that's done. But I don't quite agree with the seed was planted in 2013. We go back years, we've had people in town working on this proposal. We've worked with Barbara, that's all the past years. We've get it into an open space document before this committee took it. Yes, this committee has moved it forward 2,000% and thank you very much. But the seed was planted by taxpayers and people wanting for, we could have put it into the ground. And you guys did it. I tend to establish that we said the seed was planted.
For us, for our group, we had the records run back to the 70s.
But I didn't hear you recognize anyone from years past who tried to bring this forward. We've worked with worst convenings, that's not bad. Obviously, we got documentation on it. So it was, thank God, we were at, thank God, we have, thank God for your committee because it was kind of great, tremendous, up to the top. The effort was very beautiful.
Just so that you know, the, on the website, the town's website for the Airline Trail, we do have a history and we talk about, some details about that portion of the history. Because you're absolutely right, there was a movement back in, left the 80s, that was trying to get it done. And we did plant the seed, but that didn't actually.
We did a lot of work, trying to plan and solve the mission to keep it in our open space, to recognize something for wind farms, for state, for project, at least for projects.
I agree, Norman. Thank you for your work with the Portland Environmental Watch back in the day. Well, no, you were involved and I know many other people, Gene Dilworth and several others, so. And John Lashane. That's right. Yeah, God rest his soul. Thank you very much. So if there's no further questions, we're going to move on to appointment of auditor of public accounts and I'm going to have Tom Robinson come up for that, please.
So a couple of things here. We saw on the current agreement, we have another year.
Tom, would you do me a favor and move something?
With the current agreement, we have another year for next year on this agreement. The fee was $41,500, so that's the proposed fee. The, the firm has also provided a five-year extension with the fees for 2021 would be $41,500, $40,000 fiscal year 2022, $41,500 fiscal year 2023, $41,500 fiscal year 2004, 2024, $41,750, and fiscal year 2025, $42,000. When I was, came here in '08, the initial, the audit fee at that time was around about a $46,500 fee. We've worked with the various firms over the time, Carlin, Jason Ross, and CCR, Grant Thornton, and Mahoney Sable to continually get, to work on the fee structures and on those audits. So I think that's a very strong extension offer that Mahoney Sable has provided. And I just, you know, we'll continually bring it to you yearly as we do for appointment, but we wanted to share that with you for your review and consideration. And then also for this year to get them appointed for, as we are required to do for next year's audit.
There is a proposed resolution in front of you. Appointment of the auditor of public accounts. Resolve that pursuant to Section 407 of the Portland Town Charter, the Board of Selectmen hereby appoints the firm of Mahoney Sable of 180 Glastonbury Boulevard, Suite 400 Glastonbury, Connecticut 06033, to audit the books and records of the town for the fiscal period July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Say goodbye, Lou. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. Congratulations and thank you for your work and all those who are associated with Mahoney Sable. Look forward to working with you. Thank you again, Tom.
Thank you.
The next item is just quickly, fiscal year 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program. We will have a resolution for your consideration on March 18 to move ahead with that grant. There were no, there weren't many comments, just a few questions tonight, but we will have that at our next meeting on March 18. With that, we'll move on to number nine, which is schedule for building permit fees. And that is in front of you on the yellow paper, I believe. From time to time, we are authorized by ordinance and state law to look at the schedule for building permit fees. And as we look at our budgetary process, it is something that we revisit. We haven't changed the fees in a long time, but we do have a proposal for you. Whereas the schedule of fees for town services shall be set from time to time and a schedule of such fees shall be filed with the town clerk's office. And whereas in accordance with Section 405.3 of the Portland Town Charter, the Board of Selectmen shall by ordinance fix the charges for services rendered by the town. Now therefore be it resolved that the below listed fees for administering the building code permits, be it is hereby adopted, for the first thousand or portion thereof, it's currently $15. The proposal in front of you is to change that to $25. For every thousand or portion thereafter, $12 is the current price. We're proposing a $3 increase to $15. And construction without a permit, we're proposing that that not be in the schedule of building permit fees. It's currently $100. For the purpose, for the reason, I should say, it's removed from local jurisdiction to be prosecuted by the state of Connecticut if you have construction on properties without a permit. So we are no longer able and nor will we charge any fee for that. Be it further resolved that the above service charges enacted pursuant to Section 405.3 shall become effective 14 days after adoption by the Board of Selectmen. And in accordance with Chapter 4, Section 405.3 of the Town Charter, a public hearing must be held on the proposed rates, at which time any resident shall have an opportunity to be heard regarding the same. And we are suggesting that we have a public hearing on March 18, 2020, at 6:00 PM in the Portland Senior Center in the Mary Lou Rice Room. Because remember, this building will be closed effective March 9. This building is being closed, the library for renovations, and we are relocating typically, barring unforeseen circumstances, our meetings will be held at the Senior Center. So this public hearing on the 18th of March will be held there to hear from our citizens and residents on these proposed changes. So I'll open it up for discussion.
I'm okay with the changes. I think that, you know, everybody knows that things cost more and it costs money to operate the town as well. So I think these fees are fair.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Do we have any sense of when they were last modified?
Tom, do you remember? Building permit fees?
I think I have a record that it was 2010.
I know it's been a while, 2010. So, ten years ago. And I believe Lincoln White had looked at other towns and feels that these are in concert with other towns. An analysis of what is charged.
Has anyone reached out to other developers in town, asking if it's gonna affect their costs?
It would be appropriate at the public hearing to, I think for us, if you choose to get ahold of contractors, let them know. It'll be printed in the newspaper, and we would welcome the opportunity for them to come to the public hearing. So, we're not adopting these tonight. We're suggesting them. And as part of that process, we're required to go to a public hearing, at which time people can come and tell us their thoughts, and then we can take action.
Tom, what kind of revenue did building permits generate with the town last year? What did it take?
It generated around a hundred, a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. And then depending on the, 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 place that's up. That's, if you look at our normal yearly basis, it's somewhere around a hundred, a hundred and ten thousand.
Any other questions? So, what I need is a motion to approve that these will go to a public hearing on the 18th at 6 o'clock here in the, not here, at the Portland Senior Center, the Mary Lou Rice Room.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. The next item is also fees, I believe, for the transfer station. And Bob Shay is here. Bob, can you come up to the podium and give us a highlight of the proposed fees for transfer station resource recovery? This too would have to go to a public hearing. Hey, Bob?
Hey there. Good evening. So, as we tried to get closer to the gap in the transfer station last year, we suggested some changes, and we made a few of those changes, which proved to be beneficial. We still have some changes that we're going to be forced into based on the costs that we're going to have to absorb for changes with our long-term contract that we currently have. Those areas are your bulky waste, which are gonna go up significantly, which is gonna cost us an additional twenty-five dollars to dispose of, as well as some other costs. So, the proposals that you have in front of you are some minor, other than your bulky waste per ton proposal, which goes from our current a hundred and fifty dollars to a hundred and seventy-five dollars a ton, which covers the twenty-five dollar increase that we'll be paying to dispose of that where we are now. So, we're trying to cover that gap that we have. The other small increase is on the small bags for garbage from one dollar to two dollars, which will help us there, because that seems to be the most frequently used bag. We've been losing a little bit of revenue everywhere else, and to be perfectly honest with you, it seems like our usage as far as garbage has gone down at our facility. But recyclables, of course, are up, which is, you know, part of your permit that we currently charge there. So, you know, with that said, those changes are there. One other change, which is really just a burden for the fact that we have a, a program that accepts used mattresses, and it works very, very well. But if a mattress does come into our facility that is damaged beyond the acceptable range that the program will accept, it goes into our bulky waste. We are charged for that mattress, not its weight. So, that's gonna be another increase that we see, and we want to increase that accordingly based on the charge that we're gonna have. So, they actually charge us per mattress in our bulk, bulky waste. So, we, we saw that big change over the past few years. The change that we made last year made a big difference. We were losing money on that for those mattresses. We don't see as many coming in, so that mattress fee is, is really someone that needs to get rid of a very badly damaged mattress, something that's, you know, either been left outside or not taken care of, and they'll have to pay for that. There is an item on there that I've done a lot of homework on over the past forty-eight hours. And we're trying to wrap, I am trying desperately to wrap my arms around the fact that we are spending so much money chipping brush. And we are getting no revenue for that, other than the permitting fee, which is miniscule, compared to how much money it's costing us. I've been told by contractors last year that the price is gonna be going up significantly to do that work, and it's basically related to the fact that the product that they're chipping and taking for us is not as valuable. There's too much of it. As you could see, just drive the highways and see how much work is being done. So, as far as chip that's left from grinding, it's not as valuable to sell anymore, and there's an abundance of it in those particular facilities that do this work. So, I reached out to over twenty different towns in the state over the past two days. They are all in the same shape that everybody's in. They are fighting the revenue source for that, the increased cost to get rid of their brush that they're accepting, and how to charge for it. Many that don't have scales are trying to do it by the load, which I somewhat suggested in your resolution. Well, to be perfectly honest with you, if you sit down like I have over the past two days and struggled with that, that really doesn't get us anywhere. We're fortunate enough to have a scale. We use that for bulky waste. We've invested money in that. Many of those towns that do have scales are weighing their brush, and they're charging for that. And that charge is all over the map. It runs anywhere from twenty dollars a ton to seventy dollars a ton. And if you do the math, the seventy dollars a ton, you're still losing a little money, based on the amount of brush we bring in. We're ranging anywhere from ninety-five hundred, which could be up to fourteen thousand dollars to just chip that pile once a year. It's a lot of money. Some towns are doing it twice a year for twelve to fourteen thousand dollars, depending on how much they can hold, which we're in the same boat. We can only store so much there before we have to do it. And if there's a storm, and we are, we have an awful lot of brush that comes in, you know, we'd have to look for aid for that. But those are the circumstances where you can actually have to do it twice a year. Fortunately enough, since I've been here, which is only two years coming up on it, it's only once a year. But, so, I would recommend a change there, that we would go by the tonnage. I can give you some estimates where if we were to charge twenty dollars a ton, it would be about three dollars for your typical pickup truck full. And for your masonry dump truck, which would be a, you know, standard smaller-sized dump truck, landscaping dump truck, it would probably be about ten dollars. And as you go, if you move up to that point, if you were at the seventy-dollar range, your large, you know, masonry dump truck would be thirty dollars, and your homeowner would be in the area of ten to twelve dollars. So, we need to start somewhere. I would suggest you start somewhere halfway there, so that your typical pickup truck load of brush comes in between three and five dollars. You have to be permitted, so you'll have to have that, and that'll start taking some of the burden off of that revenue source that we desperately need to handle and mitigate that. And I only see it possibly increasing with the whole infestation and the disease that's currently moving in this direction from down east. So, I'm hoping that maybe it doesn't move, but I can only envision that, you know, we're gonna see more brush.
Any questions for Bob?
I think when I looked at this initially, that was the only question I had, right? And the question I also had was, you had single axle. I'm assuming that if you wanna go by weight, it's gonna be anybody bringing brush.
It is, and that's the way to do it, Jim, and, you know, looking at that a lot closer, there's really no, that's not a real fair way of doing it, because someone can bring in a trailer for five dollars, or the trunk of their car for five dollars. So, if you do it by weight and come up with a weight structure, and we have the capability of doing that, and, you know, over the scale and off it goes, then that's a much, much, much more fair method of, of charging for the product. You know, we certainly wanna be fair. And then, you know, with that said, we, we have to remember that we also pick up every other year. Curbside. So, you know, that's a big benefit as well to the taxpayers, oh, you know, so. Those are the years that get difficult. Those are the big piles of brush. And if everybody uses the transfer station, you know, it's pretty amazing how big that pile gets. The days of burning are gone, so, long gone.
Rest assured.
How does it affect the scale? I don't know how long, how much use the scale currently gets. But every time you drive on, drive off, you have to drive on and drive off a second time.
Mm-hmm.
Or, do we have any maintenance issues or anything with the scale?
No, the scale's fairly new. We do have a maintenance contract. We haven't had any real issues with the scale, so, you know, those scales are built to have an awful lot of traffic. You know, there's not a medium scale, or, you know, they're, they're built to take an awful lot. There's a lot of other facilities that do the scales for a lot of other things too as well. So, you know, we weigh our trucks in and out when we're hauling, so it gets usage. You know, we have our minor glitches with the computer stuff, but, you know, all in all, I don't think that that's gonna make too much of a difference. I would hope that it wouldn't. It's a fairly new scale, so we can monitor that. But I think it's just gonna be getting used to the program, and it's gonna be more work on my staff.
Bob, do you suggest that what we have on the screen sheet be amended?
I would say the only thing that I think that should be amended is the brush. If you're in favor of starting to charge for that, then we should charge by the ton.
So, it says new brush, residence only with permit. And what would the cost be effective July 1, 2020? Well, strike out the five dollars per load.
Right.
Single axle, and what are you suggesting?
My suggestion was to try to meet the halfway goal of forty dollars.
So, forty dollars per ton?
Per ton.
So, we'll make that change. Any other suggestions or questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to have this also go to the same date and time of March 18, 2020, at 6:00 PM in the Portland Senior Center. To have this also on our public hearing agenda, which is the transfer station resource recovery fees matter. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Say goodbye, Lou. Further discussion? There being none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the proposed water and sewer usage rates. This also will require the public hearing date to be set. I'm gonna turn it over to the chairman of our Water and Sewer Commission, Jim Truss.
So, a, as you saw in the, then timely, in the audit, one of the things we've been battling is running deficits in both the water and in the sewer funds. It's a longstanding problem that we've had, just because as costs have escalated. We made some changes a couple of years ago that really should've done a good job on the water side. We knew we had to do some additional work in the next term. On the sewer side, what we didn't anticipate was effectively, when you look at it from a compound, a compound effect, a thirty-nine percent increase in the rates we're getting from MDC. They've gone thirteen percent, eleven percent, and then thirteen point four-three percent. And that, that's created a lot of havoc in terms of the cost that Bob is having to pay for water that we're bringing into town. So, we've had to go back and take a look. The approach that we took was, ended up being fairly straightforward. We took a look at the actual usage numbers that we had, fortunately, from a lot of the work that was done in the year that the audit was performed. We looked at that full fiscal year worth of usage numbers, and then we applied the, the rates that we have to that and measured that against what the anticipated budgets were gonna be. There was work done on both sides of the equation, especially on the water side, with trying to constrain costs. And what we tried to get to is a place to where we're somewhat in balance as we move forward. Always it's projections, so we're trying to do the, the best we can. Those rates, basically, what we ended up looking at is for the water side of the house, doing a five-dollar increase to the lower-level meters, which are your five-eighths, it's basically a typical household meters, a five-dollar increase per quarter, and then a four-point-two-five percent increase. There'll be two of those in, in phases. The first one would kick in on July 1, 2020. The second one would kick in on April 1, 2021. The reason for that April 1 date, and we did this on both the water and the sewer side, is that when the billing goes out for the second quarter, that money, the billing actually occurs in the third quarter, which is after, you know, of the year, which is the first fiscal quarter of our, of our town budget. By doing it that way, the revenues coming in will now start to align with actually our budget numbers. So, it'll make it a little bit easier, is how we're trying to track it. On the sewer side, we basically, similar approach. We looked at the actual usage numbers. We looked at, based on the current rates, we looked at what the numbers were and what we had for deficits, and the rate and changes that we made for that. Again, five dollars on the connection charge, and a, in this case, a three-point-five percent increase on the usage rates. And again, that will happen in both on July 1 of 2020, and then a second phase with the same increases on April 1, 2021. Just like we did last time, the increases that are happening on the connection charge and on the meter charges, there'll be proportional increases associated to larger meters. On the sewer side, it's just a straight connection charge, so we don't have to worry about that. I don't think if there's anything else that's a big item to talk about. That's, in terms of the increases, what we're doing, I think that's the, that's the, the nuts and bolts of it. I did wanna say, because this is something that takes, you know, this took a long, this, this is something, there was a lot of work done on this. I know I wanna thank, I know that Rick Shire wished he could be here tonight, but he was gonna be away. He did offer to call in though, so I wanna note that. But we had a lot of support. You know, Ralph Sampaio and Rick Shire also serve on the subcommittee. But also, at, at pretty much every meeting, Bob Shay was there. So was Dave Kuzminsky. We also had good support from our Water and Sewer Commission, both that Cody and Norm Ward were at a good number of the meetings that we had. So, we were lucky that we were able to talk through a lot of these issues and hopefully get to a good place. The projections that we're looking at, based on the projections, again, they have a good shot to get us, you know, close, and that's the goal. And we're gonna have to keep obviously evaluating what we're doing. But we were looking at a ninety-thousand-dollar deficit on, on the sewer side, and a fifty-five-thousand-dollar deficit on the water. By the way, that's a little deceiving, because the problem is that fifty-five-thousand-dollar deficit gets compounded with a seventy-two-thousand-dollar roughly increase in the water costs because of the MDC increase. So, that's the report. That's, that's what the goal is.
Any other discussion?
The only other comment I would make is that, what I emphasize to the commission, about to our board, or subcommittee, is that I think it's really critical that public really needs to understand the numbers. I know they always look at it just blindly in terms of, oh, we're increasing the numbers, but obviously you could see even in that very short presentation on our audit, we're dealing with a problem with regards to a deficit, and that doesn't even take into account when you start looking at the overall infrastructure issues that we deal with. So, my, my focus was to say that we really need to, to educate the public to understand why you see these increases. I'm sure none of them are gonna, very few of them are gonna know the thirty-seven percent, compounded the thirty-nine percent increase that we've seen with MDC. I think it's becoming more and more common, because it's becoming more and more an issue that you see out there in the media. The MDC is certainly out there almost every week with regards to something they're doing, and someone's having a problem with their, their rates. So, that, that's what I think is critical.
Yeah, and I think actually, that, thank you. I think it's also important to note that this is something that we've identified, given those types of increases, it's not a sustainable path. We've talked about it several times. We've got about six years, five and a half years left on our contract, and we are looking at how we approach water sources and things that we can do to actually improve the operational cost of the system. We cannot continue to have these types of increases, so that's what we're working on.
This too will go to a public hearing, and I would suggest, and entertain a motion, that this be the third item that would be on the Wednesday, March 18, at 6:00 PM, agenda for a public hearing at the Portland Senior Center, Mary Lou Rice Room, Seven Weaverley Avenue, Portland, Connecticut.
So moved.
Second.
Bye, Ralph. Any further discussion? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you, and thank you to the committee and to the Water and Sewer Commission. Thank you, and thank you to the committee and to the Water and Sewer Commission, Bob Shea and staff. A lot of good work. And then we will have a little bit more about the Water Department a little bit later in the agenda when we have another report, I think, right, Jim?
Yeah.
The next item, number 12, is capital plan improvements. I wasn't expecting you to take action tonight, because this is a rather sizable decision that you will need to think about. And as you listen to the report from Micah Divender, our auditor, he pointed out that we had a good year in fiscal year 19 in terms of, really, our departments held the line in terms of spending, and we were able to not spend as much money as we had anticipated, and our revenues were also favorable in fiscal year 19. Some of that had to do with the fact that we went up to bond. When you go up to bond, there are some premiums that are realized by the town, and that assisted us in some of the increase in the revenues. And also because of the money that was in the savings account in the bank, so to speak, we got some interest income from that. As a result, we have approximately realized for that year a little over, or, or over $600,000 to the good. Now, every year we look within our budget as to how we will allocate needs for the capital budget, and it, it is, I think, prudent to take a look at years where we do have some excess of revenues over expenditures, and we were able to save in expenditures as well, and utilize some of those dollars to invest in our capital infrastructure. Rather than adding to the budget that then is compounded every year, because you typically add on to, or you could be adding on to, capital. We have over 19% of our expenditures in reserve, and that is certainly a critical component of good budgeting. And we have worked very hard to maintain that, and also to have a double A-plus ranking, or, or... What do they call that, Tom? Your rating, I guess?
Bond rating.
Bond rating from Moody's. And therefore, what I want the board to take a look at is how we might allocate $600,000 to our capital needs and continue to make some improvements to our infrastructure. So if you bear with me for just a minute, I'm gonna read some of the suggestions that have come by way of various committees that have met, as well as our Public Works Department, our Board of Education, our Highway Building Maintenance, and Fire Departments, and Police, and Grounds. So, for the Board of Education, we are looking at security upgrades for our buildings, and we are looking at $46,500 as a suggestion. We are looking also for the Board of Education, some heating, ventilation, and air conditioning upgrades for $60,000. We are also looking within the Grounds Maintenance, a vent trap, tractor with attachments, which would assist us particularly at some of the steep hills and those that we're going to encounter at the new park for $46,000. We are looking at, within the Police Department, this, this fiscal year, we had contemplated two cruiser replacements, but because we reduced the budget after the first referendum, we only bought, we're only buying one vehicle this year. So, we are suggesting that with this proposal, that we allocate $119,500 for police vehicles to see if that would be able to replace up to, I don't know if there'd be enough, but maybe up to three. We're looking within the Fire Department and the Fire Marshal Department, breathing apparatus, bottles, replacements, that is an ongoing need that we have for our fire fighters for $5,000. We're also looking within the Highway Department, assault shed facility, which, we've been working on this project for several years, actually since about 2013. We have a need to improve the environment in that area, and specifically, Bob has a plan that has met with the requirements of the Department of Public Health, the Department of Economic and Community Development, as well as the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. And we're concerned that we will need to put aside some $50,000 to augment the grant that we have that is about at, now I think is it about $190,000? It was originally $230,000? In round numbers? Because that is an environmental requirement, we are under orders from the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection and the Department of Public Health to proceed with this, and Bob is working on that. If we don't need to spend that, that's good, but it would be an allocation in the need. If, if the need presents itself, we would be prepared. Within Public Works and Building Maintenance, the replacement of furnaces, where are these furnaces, Bob?
It's just one. It's at the Company 3 Firehouse. It's one of the last ones that makes legal rotation. We are spending an awful lot of money.
So it would be a furnace at Company 3 Firehouse for $23,000? And Bob, if you could talk to us a little bit about the dump truck and plow? That is the largest ticket item at $230,000.
It is. Unfortunately, my budget's the money budget, so we currently are, our fleet is old, although we're, you know, we, we have purchased new equipment, but the fleet is getting old. We have two dump trucks right now that have issues with their motors. One much worse than the other. The other one, we, we are using, and luckily enough, this winter we didn't have to use it as much. But there's a large concern from our lead mechanic that we're gonna have issues with one sooner than later, and possibly two, which would greatly impact our ability to take care of the roads. You know, we have 70 or 69 miles of, of road, and with the staff that we have, it takes an awful lot of time to keep those clear and safe. So that would make a large impact on our ability to do it in a timely fashion. If we lose one, two would be just about impossible. We'd have to use other resources, so the plan is to, at the bare minimum, replace one. And those are basically the current costs to do so, using our source well bidding process, or the, or the, the contracts that are out there for us to use to give us the best price. That vehicle comes with those added savings and the computers that we talked about last year to help us mitigate our salt usage, to save us money there, so we've done a lot of research on, on the particular vehicle, so that's what we're looking to replace, our oldest 1989 truck.
Questions for Bob on that?
What's the cost of that truck?
$230.
$230.
No leasing options or anything like that? Just straight out buying it?
Yeah, on this, this program, this is a buy. No, this is a buy, yeah.
At this point, I'm going to, I have a don't know that I brought enough for everyone. I thought I brought some copies. I'll look. I have a lot of papers tonight. But in terms of the budget, Mike, we, we took a look at a lease program this year, and we still have a lease program from 2019, 20?
Could you have two more years on that?
Could you, could you come up, Joe, for just a second? Two more years on the five-year lease?
It's a six-year lease. So we're in year three of a current year, we're in year three of a six-year lease. So we have, in fiscal year 21, we'll have, we'll have two more, two more years on it.
So when we put the numbers together, Mike, it really would have been added expense to this year's budget. So we're not prepared for this year to have a large lease program. So that's why it's not in your budget for fiscal year 21.
Right, so we, we first, we both, you know, went through the numbers with all, everyone's request. The Board of Ed's all in request, and all the departments' requests. You know, and the, you know, the effect on the bill rate was quite substantial. We added in various levels of a lease of between 1.75 and 1.25 million, which are generally the ranges that we kinda do. We went through between a five-year and a six-year. And the effect of that debt payment, because you always have a debt payment within the first year, that affected the debt payment was quite substantial. So, in the, in this scenario here, what you're doing is you're utilizing, you're supplementally appropriating out of fund balance in the current fiscal year, and you are putting that into capital right away and acquiring the goods right away, utilizing the funds. If the, the other options, it would be like if you went through a lease program, that would go into the budget, and then the debt, so you would most take it out of capital, of a transfer to capital, and that number would be replaced by debt. But you take the allocated amount, it's still a quite substantial amount of debt in that first year. So, I don't have the numbers at the top of my head, but let's say it's a $250,000, between $250,000 to $300,000 debt payment. That has quite a substantial effect on your mill rate. So, when you look at the budget that's out there now, I believe that we were very consistent with what we had as a capital amount from the prior year, which, due to the referendum not passing the first time, it was a strong cut to the capital last year. Next year was very strong, is a revaluation year where we have to sign the contract that we, we fund our revaluation through the capital or recurring fund. So that was the majority of the capital monies from the town side. There are about $135,000 for the Board of Ed, which was about the amount that, was the amount that they got last year, and that was allocated into, for the high school, middle school, it's about $18,000 for their speakers and sound systems, $18,500 for security upgrades, $30,000 for scrubbers, $60,000 for technology upgrades. And for, for the town, we have about $3,000 for the airline trail, about 20 or so thousand, $28,000 for computers, and that also has, in that number is $8,000 of a allotment of, should be around $15,000 for what's called a backup appliance that every three years we have to put in about $45,000 to $55,000 for. So, there's, and then $125 for the revaluation. So there's not a lot of funding within the current years. So to try to mitigate that and not have an impact on the tax dollars in fiscal year 21, the, this is a potential solution for the short-term definite needs within the Police, the, the Police Department. We have numerous 2012 vehicles and other ones that are close in that age. We have at least three that we have in that age and a little bit closer. And we're, we're just having a major, major cost of repairs on these vehicles. So, it's not making, you know, it's not making economic sense to continue that, so we're trying to here, put aside, you know, money, hopefully for three to four vehicles, depending on what type of vehicle we're able to procure. The, the Board of Ed has, they've had many meetings on security issues and matters. They've tried to apply for multiple grants on those matters. They have not had success recently. They had success a few years back. So, these are some of the items that, you know, that they're very, they're, they're important to the Board of Ed. So, there, that's a, a listing there of 46,500 of those. At the HVAC, we had a failure of the, one of the boilers at the Valley View this year. So we had to replace that, and the Board of Ed utilized some of the funding that they had from the work for that rental agreement that they got from the Valley, from the Brownstone Intermediate School, with a third party that rented the facility there, they were giving the additional appropriation of $80,000. Utilized some of that funding to, to, to obtain that boiler. But there is a twin of that boiler, still of the same old age. So we really need to replace the other side of that boiler to get that in order. That is the majority of what that HVAC amount is there. So, that is kind of the long and the short of, you know, what we're coming for here. The SBA bottles, we do have a, you'll see a further grant application that's coming in, another resolution that the volunteer fire department has put in. They have some funding available for the match on that. This $5,000 here would help with the remainder of the match if that grant was to come forward. So that would be a beneficial solution, because they, the, when you do apply for the grants, they do like to see that the matches are there. The match on the tanker, which is another resolution, you'll see that one. We don't have the money in place for that, that, because of the uncertainty of the grant, we, you know, these, and, and these immediate needs in this matter, this was more the direction to utilize the $600,000, which was reasonably close to the amount of money that we had had successfully achieved in fiscal year 19.
I'm gonna try to paraphrase what you just said in about 30 seconds.
Yes, sir.
To make sure I understand. So, buying it outright with the excess money that we have this year, it sounds like it's gonna cost us less money than if we lease it instead. It has a lesser negative effect on the budget. That was my, that was our original question. It says, is it?
It's, it's-
Because we have extra money, does it actually cost the town less by buying it outright? In terms of how it would be?
It's just, it's a little bit different way, I think, of, of budgeting for it. I mean, it's, you have, I mean, money's money, so I mean, you're, you're, you're gonna, you, you have to buy it at some point, you have to pay it back. I mean, if you do a lease, often we can do things a larger scale, and we do it over a time period with some interest rates when interest rates are strong, which they are now, you know, that's a good thing to do. But, but that debt payment then goes into your operating account, into your operating budget in the current, in that new year, which then creates a taxation effect on your mill rate. So, if we were to add that capital lease, that would have an effect on your mill rate calculation going into that year. So in the proposed budget by the First Selectwoman, that was, that seemed to be a good alternative at that point. So therefore, this is a solution to some of these very, very required matters that you, you have, as, you know, you've heard from the Public Works Director, and I know Carl Johnson is here, and he would, he would speak to that as well, that the needs at the schools for the HVAC repairs and those security upgrades, you know, they're, they're needed. And police vehicles, I mean, it's just, we're, we're really spending a lot of money on vehicles that are not, you know, that have a lot, a lot of miles on them. All right. Thank you.
To, to go to what Tom was saying about the new capacity mill rate, I did ask Tom to put together a budget that would reflect the entire amount that the Board of Education requested, which is over 4%, as well as all of the department's requests, which were, were actually reduced somewhat by Tom, as well as putting in a substantial lease payment system for this equipment that's listed here, as well as other pieces of equipment that could be purchased in the lease program. And the impact to the mill rate would be an increase of 1.90 mills. That has never passed in this town in terms of that impact. That's a substantial impact to our mill rate and to your pocketbooks, frankly. So, what we're doing is utilizing some, I think, very prudent measures in terms of fiscal year 19, when we didn't spend as much money as we had anticipated, and our revenues were very positive, and I pointed that out a little bit earlier. By utilizing those dollars, you are able to get the equipment as well as perform some of the functions that need to be done in our schools and in our buildings. The proposal that some of you have with you, some of you picked up your budgets earlier, the proposed expenditures are, are going up in the proposal, and I'll emphasize, this is a proposed budget that comes from my office with help from the Finance Office. So the total budget that you're going to see in your books, selectmen, is $35,614,610. That $35 million figure represents an increase over the current fiscal year, that's this year, of $957,961, which is a 2.76% increase in your expenditures for the entire town. When you break it down, the Board of Education portion of the total budget that's proposed would be $21,852,167. When you break it down, the board of education portion of the total budget that's proposed would be twenty one million, eight hundred fifty two thousand, one hundred sixty six dollars. Which is an increase of five hundred ninety five thousand, one hundred ninety six dollars for the board of education. Which is a two point eight percent increase over the current fiscal year. For general government, which includes debt, capital, as well as operations for all of the general government departments. The number is thirteen million, seven hundred sixty two thousand, four hundred forty four dollars. Which represents an increase of three hundred and sixty two thousand, seven hundred sixty five dollars for general government. Debt and other payments over the current year. That is approximately two point seven one percent. So when you look at the impact of that, along with um, some of the other positive facts that have occurred. Uh, state revenue came in slightly higher this year. Um, the other revenues, which I had mentioned earlier, came down a little bit. And some of that is due to the fact that um, the bond that had the premium is not in this coming year's budget as well. Our interest that we got from the amount that was in the bank is down this next year. Um, the grand list increased one point three percent, which is one of the highest numbers we've had in several years. So we do get a bump from our bill, which goes up um. Well, the the grand list went up ten million, seven hundred seventy seven thousand, eight hundred twenty dollars from last year's grand list. The value of one mill in Portland is eight hundred and thirty nine thousand, five hundred twenty six dollars. That's an increase of ten thousand, seven hundred seventy eight dollars for every mill that we have. Um, so taken in um, all of those figures. The numbers that are represented um would result in a tax mill increase proposed of zero point eight five mills. So rather than the one point nine mills, the selectmen have a budget that presents a mill rate proposed increase of point eight five. So over the course of the next um month and and a little bit into April, they will look at these numbers. They'll look at, um, I would like you to certainly take a look at this proposal that we have for you tonight in terms of expenditures for capital. And we'll discuss with the various departments, um, how you wish to proceed with your budget. That will then go to town meeting and referendum. So I made copies of this and I will find them. I have a box of papers here that I just need to make sure that I get it to you. So is there any comments or questions on what I just said? To look at, at least it's something for us to review. Um, I know that there's always disappointments, um, because requests that come in don't all get satisfied. Um, but I am trying to present to the selectmen, a budget that is fiscally responsible. And meets the needs of our community in concert with our ability to pay. Um, and still move the town forward. Some of the things that I that I do want to point out are, we've had a lot of success over the last few years. Uh, in completing the construction work on the route seventeen part, which is completed just about. Replacing sidewalks on many of our streets in town, Main, East Main, Spring, Fairview, Waverly and Freestone. Completing the road construction and the water and sewer replacement mains on East Main Street and Spring Street. Improving traffic safety on High Street and Ames Hollow with the two digital speed signs, which I might say is slowing traffic down. We repaved Fire Company One's parking lot. We be, we are in the process of replacing the roof at Fire Company Number Two. We have replaced the roof at Town Highway Garage. We replaced a boiler at Valley View School. We improved and replaced the surface of the tennis courts at the secondary schools. We made kitchen improvements and cafe improvements at the PHS Learning Cafe. We improved the sprinkler system at Brownstone Intermediate School. We replaced the flooring at the senior center, Parks and Recreation and Youth Services Departments. We continue the review of the water and sewer systems, as was pointed out earlier. And many other things that um are not on this list, but they're they're in your budgets. Um, so that was all done this year. And I think that um, we are doing very well in terms of maintaining our systems. Okay, so we'll put this on a future agenda and certainly when you go home and have a chance to really look at this. I'm sure you'll have some questions, feel free to contact Tom, myself, Bob Shea. Uh, as well as members of the board of education in terms of some of the items that are listed here. We have staff here tonight as well as board members.
And I think I would add to it is that I I know from that list that, from my experience of being in the long range capital meetings. That those items are indeed, uh, they've been uh frequent flyers on that list.
If there are no other comments, we'll move on. So the next item um is Bob Shea is gonna help us with this one. Um, Bob, along with some assistance from a grant writer that was hired by the fire department. Has put in two grants, a grant to the federal government for a new tanker. And also authorization, he's looking for to apply for assistance to a firefighter grant for breathing apparatus. And these are two critical components of our fire department. And Bob and his team have prepared, I think, an excellent um, application. And I just want you to talk to that a bit if you would.
Sure, so we um, continue to pursue every opportunity that we can to um, write grants to replace our. Apparatus, our aging apparatus or equipment. Um, and we've been very successful over many years. And it's getting a little tighter, a little more difficult, the money's not as readily available. And the selection process is is getting difficult. So we do have a grant, um, he's not a writer. Um, he is actually, I wish he would write for me, but that's too expensive. Um, he reviews our grants and gives us pointers and reads what we write and present. And then um, you know, spends a little bit of time giving us the information that we need to kind of. Point us in the right direction and make changes to what we do. So I'm very fortunate to have help and have had help for a few years with this task, because it's a little daunting. It's, you know, forty to sixty pages of of work for this particular federal grant. And unfortunately, it's not a cut and paste situation each year, they change the plan, of course, to make it more difficult. And so you can't really use your, and everybody knows that, that deals with this. So this year again, um. We are looking to replace our nineteen eighty five, I did say that, nineteen eighty five tanker. Which protects our entire country, area of town. Um, because there's no municipal water out there, so we have to bring it to your homes to do our job. Um, you know, with that said, um, we're there, this will probably be our last attempt. Um, we made it very, very close this year. We made it to the last awarding pile of grants. And they basically stack them based on their grade, which I think the stack is all A's. But it all depends on how close to the A plus you get. And then they fund them until they run out of money. So we were somewhere in that pile and we didn't get there. Um, we did review that um, with the grant administrators. And we think we've pinpointed some of the areas that maybe we can do better. So we focused our grant this year in those areas and resubmitted that um, for review. We hope that the grant process has apparently been streamlined, so we might hear earlier than than normal. We're hoping that, you know, mid summer, we might hear um, some benefit on that. You know, you're dealing with a truck that probably, and I don't know, I just probably had got out of high school when that truck was built. Um, you know, y- you're looking at four hundred thousand dollars for a piece of apparatus that really just carries water and has a minimal pump. Um, which probably was in the tune of about maybe ninety thousand dollars, you know, when we looked at this in eighty five, if that. Um, the prices of apparatus are soaring, um, as well as with the economy. And that's directly related to the cost of materials, steel, stainless, everything that gets put into these trucks. So we are in desperate need of a tanker, we're gonna continue to do that. Um, I'm hoping that we get this award, which will save um, the town and the taxpayers uh, close to three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. If we do that, because the share, as you see there, will be a small portion of that. We also are falling into the end of use cycle on our breathing apparatus. That we were awarded a grant for back in two thousand and five, I think. Um, it's coming up on its end of use cycle, meaning that it'll be noncompliant to a certain extent. Where we're really wearing stuff that should have been replaced. Um, a critical part of what we do and what saves us and what allows us to get into a burning building and save you. So it's a critical part um, of our everyday fighting, fighting equipment. We decided to start the grant process a year in advance of becoming noncompliant. With hopes that we will follow everyone else around us that we do mutual aid with, that has been um, able to receive the grant. So our mutual aid partners were awarded a grant prior to our award in oh five, and we follow the same cycle. Um, so we're hoping that they look at that, that it's a critical part of our mutual aid. For us to be able to interchange this device with other firefighters in other towns that may be assisting us or we're assisting them. Because they've changed and we're noncompliant with what they wear. So we can't change bottles out together and we can't wear individual parts of the packs together like we used to. And that's critical, that's very, very important that you can work with other departments. And you can swap that particular equipment out on scene, it's not, it doesn't matter what bottle goes in the pack. If somebody brings a bottle, it works. Well, we're at that point now where we're kind of on the island. And uh, we need to kind of get compliance. So we're using that mutual aid portion of that for the SCBA grant that we wrote to try to push us over the top there. So you see those numbers, um, they're big numbers. Uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the SCBA grant, three hundred and eighty five thousand dollars for the tanker. And then our share is a little higher on the grant um, for the tanker, because the equipment for the apparatus grant. There's, there, it requires us to 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 add a little higher percent towards that grant versus the equipment grants. So we'll, we'll see. Um, that line item in the SCBA bottle, um, line item for capital is. Critical to keep the bottles on our packs up to date. I have to take them out of service after so many years. And the sad part about that is, we bought them all at once. So everybody's got this, they all have the same stamp date on them. So eight years ago, I started to replace them early, so we wouldn't end up with thirty five bottles that were no good and nowhere to breathe. So we're ahead of it.
Read the motion in the form of the, read the resolution in the form of the motion.
Sure.
I'll make a motion uh, that we adopt the resolution dated uh, March four, twenty twenty, titled Authorization to Apply for Assistance to Firefighter Grant Tanker. Whereas the Portland Fire Department is in need of a new tanker fire apparatus. That can be used to carry water to calls where water is not readily available. And whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA offers grants for assistance to firefighters. CFDA number ninety seven dot zero four four. And whereas the Portland Fire Department wants to apply for a grant in the amount of three hundred and eighty five, three hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. Federal share of grant is two hundred and ninety three thousand, three hundred and thirty three dollars. If awarded, the town of Portland would need to provide a match of twenty five percent. Uh, amounting to approximately ninety two thousand dollars. Match funding would need to be set aside at a future date. Now therefore be it resolved that the board of selectmen of the town of Portland hereby approves. Susan S. Brands, Brandsfield for a select woman and or her designee. Fire Chief Robert Shea to apply for, sign and execute any required documents for the grant process.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
By Ralph. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries? And Jim, the second one for the breathing apparatus?
Sure, I make a motion that we adopt the resolution dated March four, twenty twenty, titled. Authorization to Apply for Assistance to Firefighter Grant Breathing Apparatus. Whereas the Portland Fire Department is in need of updated compliant breathing apparatus. To replace current breathing apparatus that is approaching end of life. And whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA offers grants for assistance to firefighters. CFDA number ninety seven dot zero four four. And whereas Portland Fire Department wants to apply for a grant in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and fifty six dollars. Federal share of grant is two hundred and thirty eight thousand, two hundred and forty four dollars. If awarded, the town of Portland would need to provide a match of five percent, amounting to approximately eleven thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars. Match funding would need to be set aside at a future date. Now therefore be it resolved that the board of selectmen of the town of Portland hereby approves. Susan S. Brandsfield for a select woman and or her designee, Fire Chief Robert Shea. To apply for, sign and execute any required documents for the grant process.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lou. Um, Bob, so it's a twenty five percent match for the tanker and a five percent for the breathing apparatus.
That's correct.
Any other questions for Bob or comments? Thank you for applying for these once again. And we'll hope that uh, we are funded this year, it's very much needed.
Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries? And here is um, a briefing on some of the budget information that I read, that I was reading. It just summarizes what's in your books.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any appointments to boards and commissions tonight? I did want to make a special mention tonight of one of our board members. Um, longstanding member of our ethics commission who passed away suddenly. Uh, Jim Provolis died on Sunday and it was, I don't think, expected. And so we're very, very sorry that um, he passed away. He had recently resigned from the ethics commission due to some um, issues that he had to address. So if we could just have a moment of silence for our friend Jim and maybe a prayer for him as well. I'd like the minutes to reflect the thanks to Jim Provolis for all of his work. Special um, mention of condolence to Kathy, his wife, as well as his family. Jim was also the chairman of the board of education when I served on the board. And he um, was a great teacher as well as a great friend, so we're all gonna miss you, Jim. Thank you very much. Are there any appointments?
We do, we uh, would like to uh, appoint Stacy Benham to the ethics commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries? Any other uh, appointments tonight? We'll move on to number sixteen, refunds of excess payments. Jim?
Sure, I make a motion that we refund the amount of three hundred and eighteen dollars and eight cents to Nissan Infinity LT.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries?
I make a motion that we refund the amount of three hundred and forty eight dollars and eighteen cents to Ally Financial.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries?
I make a motion that we refund the amount of thirteen dollars and ninety two cents to William J. Caffery, Jr.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries?
I make a motion that we refund the amount of two hundred and twelve dollars and six cents to William George and Lauren Howell.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries?
I make a motion that we refund the amount of twenty seven dollars to Michael and Annette Kirschberger.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries?
I make a motion that we refund the amounts of forty three dollars and thirty five cents and thirty one dollars and eighty five cents to Sharon Scaramella.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries?
I make a motion that we refund the amount of one hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty eight cents to Wright's Island Farm LLC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries?
I make a motion that we refund the amount of one hundred and seventy six dollars and forty nine cents to John and Courtney Wilson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries?
I make a motion that we refund the amount of two hundred and forty seven dollars and forty nine cents to John Wilson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries?
I make a motion that we refund the amount of one thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and twenty four cents to. I make a motion that we refund the amount of $1,907.24 to Jeffrey J. Jagoda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
I make a motion that we refund the amount of $3,789.09 to CoreLogic Tax Services LLC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
I make a motion that we refund the amount of $2,481.49, I'm sorry, $2,481.49 to CoreLogic Tax Services LLC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
I make a motion that we refund the amount of $43.90 to Colby Direct Delivery LLC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
I make a motion that we refund the amount of $30 to Real Joe Properties LLC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
I make a motion that we refund the amount of $20 to Joshua L. Wells.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Second page.
Almost there. I make a motion that we refund the amount of $200 to Charles and Jean Gusterson Trustees.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Gunderson Trustees.
Gunderson.
Gunderson.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
I make a motion that we refund the amount of $18.08 to Root 66 Donuts LLC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
And I make a motion that we refund the amount of $591.68 to Santander Bank North America.
Second.
What's that?
Yeah. Good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Status reports. Jim, I think you had something on water and sewer from the commission.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, we, because we've been working in the group as, again, we've had good representation at the subcommittee meetings. The Water and Sewer Commission actually had a special meeting on February 4th. This goes to the issue of we're trying to look at alternate water sources. There's been a lot of discussion about potentially digging, drilling some test wells and they met on February, I believe they met on February 24th and it basically says on February 24th, the Portland Water and Sewer Commission voted in favor of pursuing the exploration of additional well sites for the future development and sustainability of our system. So just want to let folks know that there's, there is a certain amount of urgency to this effort and ensure that.
Any other status reports? We had a good report on airline trail tonight. Thank you very much, Russ.
I just had a, I just had a couple of quick things. One is, I don't remember with regards to where I left off the last meeting, but we did, the purchase order has been submitted to get the equipment for the fitness equipment for the park, so that's out there. They continue to work on the concession bill, so everything's progressing well. And the only other thing I wanted to note with, since I'm also liaison for the library board is, and I told Jen this morning, I think they've done a really good job getting the word out as best they can, all of us knowing the challenge of how do you get the word out, but they've done a really good job of getting it out to as many people as you're gonna be able to get to let them know that it changes with the library.
I want to thank all of our town departments that are helping with that project. There will be library staff throughout the town. Some will be in Brownstone Intermediate School, some will be at the Senior Center, some will be at Town Hall and some will be at the Buck Foreman. So the library staff will be issuing information as to the services that will continue to be provided. Some of those stations will be for public to use the computers and printers and they'll also be running some programs and also available to answer questions should you need so. So check their website as well as there is a phone number that they will have on their website if you wish to call them and you can always call my office and we'll be happy to help you find a librarian. And thank you Public Works, they have a lot of coordination that they're doing since they're responsible for this building and I thank you Bob and your team for doing a great job helping us out. And thank you Tom for making sure all those purchase orders got issued. It's a great project in that it's grant funded and also funded through the generosity of those that contributed to the Endowment Fund. No local tax dollars are being used on the renovation work, but rather those donations and grant from the state of Connecticut. So kudos to our library board for the work they've been doing on that for many years and now it's actually gonna happen. Public comment? Kitch.
Kitch, Sir Nikki, excuse me, 435 Main Street. I haven't spoken in a long time. I want to thank you. This has been a great meeting and a lot of very interesting information has been provided. Tom, congratulations on the bond writing. That sounds fantastic. And congratulations to Bob Shea on looking at capital projects and with an eye toward how we're gonna work out in the future. I'm concerned about what we're gonna do with for water and sewer as we move forward. I know that we seem to be held hostage to some extent by the MDC who feels very comfortable having double-digit increases year after year. I wonder if the non-member towns could look to establish themselves as super water users and perhaps get a lower rate like the Niagara Water Company is getting. There must be some recourse that we might have and I don't know how you would pursue that. I maybe speak to other non-member towns, but you know, the people who use water and sewer are going to see a hefty raise. And, and I just worry that for the next few out years, it's gonna continue that way. I don't see any recourse, so I urge you to look at all different ways of how we can reduce our water costs. I'm also concerned that when we talk about this at the next meeting, that we look at the people who routinely do not pay their water bills. I think it becomes especially onerous for people who pay and pay on time to have in this town a number of non, of absentee landlords. And we can't do anything about water because we want the people who live in their homes to have access to water and sewer, but they don't pay their bills nor do they pay them in a timely manner. And it's unfair and, and so what do we do? What recourse do we have? Do we place liens on them and we don't collect those fees either? Are they, are they targeted for extra payment because they're running late?
Yes. 18% interest for those that don't pay their bills on time, 18 annual percent interest. We're also looking at, as we always do, we're looking at the accounts in concert with Nancy DiGirolamo or collective revenue as to whether we will have a tax lien sale and that can and does sometimes include if taxes are owed, also water and sewer that would be owed. Is that correct, Tom?
Yeah, yes. I mean, the, we would do that, we also had time to contact the mortgage companies that were involved and we can get it that way. We send out demand letters, we send out, periodically we do shut offs, we work through the process on that and then we do new tax sales of properties against to us.
That's good to hear. I think it makes people who pay their bills and pay them on time feel a little bit better. And what did I want to talk about? The tanker and the breathing apparatus. I know that you all know that we can't expect fire personnel to go into a building without proper breathing apparatus and we need to have reciprocity with other towns that have newer and, and current breathing apparatus. So I think that's one of the most important things that we look at is we have a volunteer fire department and we need to keep them as safe as possible and clearly alive. And I'm trying to think something else. What was the other big, oh, the police, police cars. So eight years, eight years on a police car is a lot of wear and tear. Are there any in the fleet that can have a little extra life? I mean, I know we're, you're looking at replacing three.
Up two, up two.
Up two, three?
We're not certain of what the.
So I, I, excuse me. Looking forward to potential occupancy of the apartments at Brainerd and potential growth of population in the town, I think that one of the things we ought to look at is potential growth in the police department. And I think that if we have an opportunity by buying more vehicles rather than fewer vehicles and getting a better price, this might be a time to do it so that as new personnel comes onboard, and I'm hoping that you're at least beginning to consider the fact that we're gonna need more police.
It's not in this budget, I will point out, but it is something that certainly is given.
Yeah, so we'd like to be ahead of that ballgame, right? And I'm happy to hear that the new slowdown signs are working where they're placed. I would be just as disappointed, I have to report to you, that on Main Street in the morning time, right after dawn and up until about 7:30 or 8 o'clock, it's still pretty much a speedway. That's bothersome and sometimes there are cruisermen out there and sometimes they're on their phone when they're out there and sometimes they're reading, I'm assuming they're reading reports. I'm hoping that they're reading reports. But I would like to see more enforcement of speed on, on Main Street. I think there's a lot of children, I know on the corner of Strong's, there's probably six children that wait for the bus every day.
I saw them this morning.
Yeah, they wait out there and cars go by that area very, very quickly. Thanks for the good work you're doing. Things sound really, really good this evening.
Thank you. I will point out when Kitch is mentioning Main Street, that there may be fewer cars once the bridge starts work. And I would encourage those residents that may be in the northern part of town or in Glastonbury, if it's convenient for them to utilize an alternate way to get over the Connecticut River, that might be of some help to them as well as to maybe less speeding on our Main Street.
We have a gondola service.
We've even, we were at Petzl's, as I mentioned, maybe I said it earlier, they're 75 years old at the boatyard on Indian Hill Avenue and Bob Petzl was joking that maybe he could start a courier service across the river and he might get there quicker. But seriously, Bob Shea is, I understand, gonna be co-chairperson of the Bridge Safety Committee. They announced that at the chamber this morning and there's lots of good work that Bob did in the past and I'm sure he'll be happy to share those, those good words. But seriously, they're gonna start probably at the end of this month, March 30 or so. They're gonna be starting with placing the concrete barriers that will start to create the one lane into Middletown and the one lane into Portland. And I also learned, and Kitch had asked this question this morning at the chamber, it's actually, let me say, a 700 plus?
741.
741 day.
That's two, three more days than was in the paper.
The bridge itself is 540 days, right, Bob?
Yeah, 540 days for the.
For the barriers on the bridge.
Closure per se, the rest of it's all work that's been done, the laws around, it's not that traffic lanes, but there's a substantial penalty per day. I think it's $15,000.
$1,000, yeah. Yeah. Is there, is there a reward for? Nothing, no reward? No, they didn't talk about that.
No, it's worth.
I don't, I can't really say, all I know is that it wasn't mentioned. There'll be further information, I'm trying to share it here at our meetings, The River East and the Middletown Press will have articles. I also try to place it on the first select woman's Facebook page and my own Facebook page. Please share it with others that maybe don't use computers because the more you know, the better off you are. Any other comments? Norm?
Norm Ward, 54 Lake Road. Probably my comment will be made as I'm a commission or a water and sewer commission. On our public hearing coming up on March 18th, I heard the subcommittee brought back their results, water four and a quarter percent increase, sewer three and a half percent increase. Has that been discussed? When does that get discussed by the whole Board of Selectment? We're going to a public hearing, but I don't know if the whole board has discussed the proposed increase from the subcommittee.
We get, we get, every time we meet, we do speak to the, the matter of water and sewer issues through, through Jim. We talked a little bit about it tonight, as you heard, you were here, and I know that the subcommittee, which is made up of Jim, Rick Shar and Ralph Zampano, talk about the rates. So it is a matter of great, number one, great concern, but it's also a matter of great research and work. So it has been the pleasure of this board that a committee that is committed to this data and this information be charged with the full investigation of these rates. So we always post those meetings for all selectmen to attend as a, as a regular meeting. We're gonna look at doing that for the Water and Sewer Commission members so they can attend too. But it's of such great amount of detail and looking at the models that we have that done by committee and then it's presented to the full board. Now what will happen at the 18th is, you know, we will listen to what others have to say, then this board will take up further discussion. I think it's important for this board to listen to what people have to say before we begin to really cement and, and say that these are the numbers that we want. It's important for us to listen to not only our customers, but other people that live in the town and would be subject to making payment on bonds and things if they're not paid properly. So that's the method that we're using. I find that it's effective due to the amount of detail that's associated with the water and sewer fee setting.
Oh, I totally agree. The subcommittee is endless hours and a lot of work and a lot of commitment. My only concern was when we go to a public hearing on a water and sewer increase, do we get the feeling that the whole board is in agreement or backing the four and a quarter percent? Or does the board feel that's high? Does the board feel that's low? I would like to get a general feeling of the board.
What we typically do after that public hearing is that discussion will ensue. So I would invite you to come. I'm sure you'll be here on the 18th so that you can listen. I've, I've looked at the reports from the committee, Norm. I agree with what's put forward and look forward to further listening to what others have to say before I make up my mind.
So my only comment to wrap it up, I just thought the board would discuss it a little bit and come to a general agreement before we sent it to a public hearing. If I go to a public hearing and you're telling me four and a quarter, maybe, and then it comes back, oh, no, the whole board yesterday said, no, we're done, do six.
Then it would have to go to another public hearing.
It would go back.
Because that's a substantive change to the matter. So anytime you have a public hearing, if you don't pass it as it's pretty much given to you, but there's a major change, such as what you just said, it would go to another public hearing before this board could pass it.
So.
Does that answer your question?
So my last comment would be, I would like to see the whole board just general, a general discussion before we went to a public hearing. It sounds to me from tonight, this proposal is coming directly from the subcommittee to a public hearing where the board hasn't, what I can say, the board hasn't really discussed it. They're taking the report and going, going with it. I would just like to see more support from the whole board because it is a very sensitive issue. We're in deficit in both funds. We've been in deficit in both funds for years. We've had a lot of discussion on rates.
And I will repeat that we do talk about this at every meeting. So it's not just tonight that we talk about rates, but we do talk about them at every meeting. But I understand what you're saying, Norm.
We blame it on, on the MDC for 16% increase and stuff like that. Last increase we had a year and a half ago, 3%. Before that, we didn't have any increase for three. I'm just saying, so we didn't have any increase for three years. We went up 3% and 3% six months later. Now we're looking at four and a quarter, but the district came in at, I think somebody threw up 16%.
The basic meter rate charge also goes up, and that should be added to the percentage. Oh, that's substantial.
The blended rate is...
I know, but at our 3% on a, just at our 3% previous increase, it didn't catch us up, and we thought now was going to do it. So here we are again. And we're coming in, district came in at 16%, higher than ever, and we're looking at four and a quarter. That's all.
It was 13, the last, the last increase was 13.43 from the MDC. The MDC, one of the things that we're dealing with right now is the fact that it's about, based on the current budget that we have, and looking at the operational cost, looking at the projected cost of water, and looking at the balance of the budget that Bob did some work on, it's about 52% of the budget is now water. We cross that Rubicon, and 52% of the budget is being driven by the MDC. But when you look at that, the impact to your rates, that would be roughly half of that rate impact is now going to be required to be looked at in your rates. Right? When you basically apply that out. So, and we're doing that. But when you look at the blended rate increase between changing the fixed rate and the usage rate, which gives you a blend between making sure that it's not only, it provides a balance between low users and higher water users, which you try to do, it's very helpful with how we have to get there. Especially with some of the cost stuff that Bob's worked on on the water side.
Yeah, and the other thing is that, you know, even when we, I think, did this first exercise, the last time we did rates, we were talking about double-digit increases. I mean, we, you know, we put 10, and that's what we've been using as a basis, and then they turn around with 13.4, so.
Yeah, the historical MDC increase, the historical MDC increase prior to the last few years has been 4%. So much so that there were some folks that actually thought that's what it was contractually. And it's not the case. And then all of a sudden, we saw these charges start going up at very high rates. And you make the assumption, if there's a blip, if they need a project, that you may get a 13% increase, and then they start building from that now higher base at a rational increase level. And they're not. They're compounding a 13% with an 11 with a 13.43. What we've now done, as we're modeling them out, is we're projecting double-digit increases so that we can actually start capturing it. We're also looking at how we're projecting the model out so that we're looking and saying that we need to capture the additional increase six months early, because the MDC increases take place on January 1, as opposed to. So we've gotten a little smarter, and we've also gotten a little bit of, this is a more, this is a little bit more unfortunately, this is a little bit higher of an increase than we had to do last time. Had we stayed based on where we were, had we, had they continued with 4% increases, I don't think we would be in the situation we're in. We'd be, water would have been okay, especially with the cost containment work that Bob's been doing. Two years ago, the big difficulty was sewer. Sewer was further behind. We knew it was going to take, so that you didn't shock the system. We knew it was going to take a couple of cycles to get there. Sewer, right now, I think we have a fair shot of being there by the time these increases are done. The nice thing about this is that the water increase, the water rate increases by MDC don't impact the sewer side. That's driven by the projects and some of the updates and the infrastructure that has to be worked on right now.
And we will take Kitch's suggestion and take a look at perhaps a rate adjustment that might be given to non-member towns. I think it's a good suggestion.
Oh, and anyway, and thank you, actually, with respect to what Kitch had commented on. That discussion has come up, and that was actually, yeah, there was discussions, and we noted it, and there were different ideas that were talked about. Some of the things, take a look at steps that are taken now in terms of letters and trying to get people onto payment plans and things of that nature, to be more aggressive from that front. But also looking at potential strategies for how we can make it easier for people to pay. Things, for example, like accepting credit cards to be used. We allow it for taxes now. We allow it for other items. We, you know, it's something we should investigate and see how we do that as well.
But it didn't. Then comments that came up in the subcommittees and the public, I don't see when that's been discussed by the board. That's my, that's my bottom-line comment. I don't see, unless I'm missing something. And my great comments, if they're not discussed by the board, how do you get your general consensus? And yet we're going to a public hearing. I just think there's something missing there, in my expectation. That's all.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I do have copies of the Household Hazardous Waste dates for you to bring your waste. And so there's some copies up here if you need to have them. With that, I think we're just about at the end of our agenda. And I have sent our information on the Ethics Commission to Joe McQuaid, and I would anticipate having some comments back from him on that ordinance. It needs work. So I'll bring that to you when he's able to achieve that. Any other discussion by the selectmen?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Who's that smart guy in the back there?